Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Middlesex County Council meeting for Tuesday, May the 26th, I like to call it to order. And I want to kick off today's meeting by reminding everybody that this is Paramedic Services Week. And aren't we so fortunate to be the service providers and the overseers of the paramedic services and the paramedics that service our communities, not only in the county of Middlesex, but the city of London? So this year's theme is pandemic, paramedics on the front line. And I'm sure you'll agree with me that it's both fitting and reflective of the MLPS and the exceptional care that they provide us, not only during this time that we find ourselves in, but each and every day. It's only been highlighted in the last little while, the work that our paramedics do. And, you know, so often they go above and beyond their call of duty, whether it is on their shifts or the work that they do in their community. So I know you will join me in thanking them and congratulating them on the work that they do. And I know you agree, we are so fortunate to be serviced by them. So thanks very much to Neil and his team. I also wanted to share with you, I think I mentioned that I've been able to be looped into a number of department meetings over the last while through this Zoom format. And, you know, it was, it was told me when I became warden that, you know, each warden makes the position their own. And there are certain things that they'll come on to. Well, certainly, for those of you that have been warden before, this is not a traditional year. And my idea of getting to know the county of Middlesex is much different than I thought it would be. And I'm, I'm fortunate enough because I'm, I'm interacting with the county staff in a different way than perhaps maybe some of my colleagues have in the past. And I wanted to share with you, last week I sat in on the department team meeting for Cindy's team in social services. And, I mean, all of, all of the meetings, I've been incredibly impressed with the group that we have working with us. And I say this all the time, but, you know, how they've adapted. But I have to share with you, that meeting with the social services department was incredibly powerful. You know, these are a group of employees that are servicing and assisting people in our community that are vulnerable, that have many challenges that we have to support. And, you know, they're working from home. And as I've said, you know, when I've congratulated the IT department in allowing us to work this way, you know, from the outside looking in, the work has been seamless. And nobody would realize that we hadn't been operating like this before. But back to, like, back to Cindy's team, how they have been able to continue to work and look after our clients who really during this time need that support perhaps more than ever. And it may not be support through our programs, but it is that emotional connection. It's that reaching out, it's having a conversation and knowing that they are supported. So Cindy, I wanted to thank you for allowing me to be part of that discussion. And again, to your team, I was, I was incredibly impressed. And it's, it's really stuck with me since we met last week. And then I just also just wanted to thank Bill and the behind the side, behind the scenes team for the work that was done on last week's round table that we hosted on Thursday. I know many of you were able to join us live. And if you didn't, if you weren't able to join us live, I hope you've been able to watch that discussion. We were fortunate enough to be visited by four cabinet ministers and then the retiring CEO, CAO of FCM. I thought they were great conversations. It was a very casual chat, and I hope you got about as much out of it as I did. So I want to thank Bill for arranging that. And we will get going then. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any business arising from the minutes that anybody from council wanted to discuss or highlight? Moving on to the minutes, you've got the two sets of minutes from our May 12th and our May 15th meetings, but a reminder that we already did approve those minutes. We don't have any deputations, any inquiries or notices of motion. Okay, moving on to reports. And then into new business. And we're going to kick things off with a report from Morgan regarding municipal modernization program, service delivery review for payroll services review service agreement. Is there an acronym for that?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I know that was a bit of a mouthful. So this is a report that Cindy and I put together in regard to our modernization programs. It looks almost identical, except for probably 10 different words that I removed from the last report in terms of digital transformation top 10. And I stuck in the payroll delivery service, the service review service agreement language. So really what this report is, is just recognizing that we did go through a procurement process in, in that it was an RFP for a consultant, a third party consultant to help us review our payroll services across the county, including those that are participating local municipalities. So really, this is just a procurement process. We ended up landing on a group called Optimus SBR Incorporated. They had a really good proposal, hit best aligned with, with Middlesex County's requirements, including the requirements of our local municipalities who are participating in this project. And of course, the provinces' requirements under the transfer payment agreement. So if there's no questions of council, I just kindly ask that the council accept the recommendation as presented.
Okay, thanks for that, Morgan. Is there any questions on the recommendation and the report as Morgan and Cindy have presented? Okay, seeing none, there is a motion in front of you. If I can entertain a mover and seconder for that. Counselor Mayhew. And Counselor Elliot. Any discussion? All opposed? And that is carried, thank you very much. Moving on, MLPS Park Hill Station Replacement. And this is of course, a report from Chief Neil. Neil? And Neil is muted.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, Council. Through you, Warden, to Council. So the report that is before you today is dealing with the Park Hill or North Middlesex Station. As Council may recall, we currently lease a station on Mill Street in Park Hill. And that lease is in place and set to expire on April 30th, 2022. We've had ongoing dialogue with the municipality of North Middlesex for quite some time about a potential partnership for a fire paramedic service station, very similar to the Hyde Park Station. And when we've had these discussions with North Middlesex, some of the areas that we're looking at is that it would be a joint station, but would have separate areas. We would like to see as Middlesex Land Paramedic Service, and I believe North Middlesex as well, to generate a backup for Middlesex Land Paramedic Service. It would have two bays and a living area, very similar to the Dorchester design, which is a standard design for our stations. We would be looking at entering into a 20-year lease. As I mentioned earlier, that the current lease expires April 30th, 2022. And we are hopeful that we would gain occupancy before the expiration of the current lease. The Authority Board was briefed on May the 19th of 2020 about the discussions that have occurred to date and sought permission to issue a letter of intent with the municipality of North Middlesex to pursue a joint venture for the construction of a new fire MLPS shared facility. This facility would be owned by North Middlesex, financed by North Middlesex. They would also oversee the designing and construction of the facility subject to Middlesex Land Paramedic Service requirements as part of the design build process. And would lease back, as all our leases are, to the county of Middlesex and to Middlesex Land Paramedic Service for the portion that would be occupied by the paramedic service. Again, it would follow the standard leases that we have in place, and that being a triple net lease. So during the meeting on May the 19th, the Authority recommended that Middlesex County support this partnership for the Park Hill Station replacement and support the issue of a letter of intent, which North Middlesex is seeking in order to move this forward. So again, if County Council approves this partnership, I would bring back regular updates with regards to any progress on this. So the recommendation through you, Madam Warden, to County Council is that Middlesex County Council support and issue a letter of intent to the municipality of North Middlesex to pursue a joint fire Middlesex Land Paramedic Service station partnership. Happy to accept and take any questions, Madam Warden. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for that. Neil, any questions or comments on this report? Counselor Mayhew. You're muted, Alan.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Neil, very often when you get a call, the fire department also are out with you. What percentage of calls are you? Do they ride shotgun or there is a double call? Is there a percentage there that you could give us? Or is that, those numbers perhaps not available or even a guess from it?
So through you, Warden, to Counselor Mayhew, I don't have the exact numbers, but I certainly can report back to County Council. With regards to the county tiered response, they are very few calls. And what I mean by that, the cardiac arrest calls, their motor vehicle collisions, their farming and industrial accidents are the set of criteria that typically the fire departments in the county correspond to us. Currently, right now, during COVID, those calls have been suspended other than cardiac arrest. But I'm happy to, to get back the percentage, especially for North Middlesex where there are tiered calls.
Thank you, Neil. There's certainly no rush on that. You have enough to do. Don't burden yourself, don't burden yourself, Neil, with any more work than you've got.
That's quite all right, sir. We'll, we'll get it back and we'll report it back through the clerk and we'll have it for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Neil? Counselor Vanderhayden.
Good, through the warden to Neil. So I'm always interested when you get to have a new build. Is there anything that you see now because of COVID or anything else that you think, gee, it would be really nice to have that in a building? I don't know, I don't even know what I'm thinking, storage or for PPs or something that you think would have been really handy to have? Because that, that's the kind of thing that I think when you have opportunity that you need to look at now.
So thank you, Counselor Vanderhayden, and through you, Warden, in response. Actually, over the last couple of years, some of the areas that we've looked at on the new designs are actually taking away from some of our facilities. And what I mean by that, so if a crew has a bad call, specifically a contaminated call, we actually want to bring them to our headquarters so we can decontaminate the vehicle and the crew can go through the decontamination section itself. So it actually keeps their home station more secure. With regards to the county, we're utilizing the Strathroy Station as an example, as a bit of a hub for supplying our county stations on supplies. And so we're trying to create some economies of scale and not duplicate specifically areas where, and I can speak to the city as an example, we don't have lockers anymore in our city stations. They're located at headquarters, especially if crews are operating out of there, the showers as well. So areas where we can create efficiencies, reduce duplication that's unnecessary. We're looking at that in another area, especially for the city, on resupplying our crews. Typically, the, the most optimal point is at the hospital because that's where, when they arrive with a patient, they're going to be short. So we're supplying them at the hospital sites versus keeping large amounts of stocks in the station that are huge areas to track and often expire. So we're trying to create efficiencies throughout the process.
Good, Joanne.
It, it is an important consideration, Madam Warden, though what Joanne's asked, because the fact that we have a decontamination bay at all is a result of a similar type of question after Ebola. And, and where would we be without it? And so Neil, you know, I do think we should probably be, like, we, we do look at best practices and we will have best practices out of this. And one of the things that I've been giving consideration to, just in the broader county perspective, is the fogging, I don't know, I'm not using the right word, Neil, what am I trying to say? What do you call those? Do you call them fogging machines?
Yes, it's a decontamination machine.
I thought there was some more technical term than that. But anyways, the decontamination machines and then what does that mean for rooms in the county, like libraries? What does it mean for ambulances whenever we are out in the county and far away from the central station? So we'll do that best practices review before we build this station and, and just determine whether there's anything more we can do for sure.
Okay, anything more on that? Okay, seeing none, again, you've got a, a motion in front of you. If I can get a mover and seconder for that, Counselor Vanderhayden and Counselor Richards. Any further discussion? All opposed? And that's carried, thank you very much. Okay, sticking with paramedic services, we've got a report on electronic patient records. And I think that Mike Longeway is going to be giving this report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, and good afternoon to Council. This report is about our electronic patient records that our paramedics use to document patient encounters. As some council may remember, since 2012, paramedics in Middlesex Land Paramedic Service have been using computer systems or electronic patient record systems for documenting these encounters. This product that we use currently is known as iMedic. And it is, it was procured after an RFP that was completed in 2011. In 2017, that contract was extended with the same, same vendor, Intervive, for the same product, iMedic. That contract at the time came with it a three, it was a three-year contract and had the option within the contract to extend that, the, the same pricing for an additional two one-year periods, so for years 2020 and 2021. The report before you today is to, is to ask the recommendation that this, that County Council support extending these contracts for the additional two years. The reason for this is currently in our COVID pandemic and during our other operational strains, this gives us a little bit of breathing room in terms of being able to extend a product that we're familiar with. We know and doesn't require a major change for our paramedics or training or process to implement at this time. This report was received by the Authority Board, who was briefed on May 19th. And again, the, the recommendation to County Council is to extend the, the contract with Intervive for two, two one-year extensions, so bring us to the end of 2021 for electronic patient care records and to authorize the chief of Middlesex Land Paramedic Service to execute that two-year contract extension. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Hey, great, thanks for that report. And any questions on this recommendation? Okay, seeing none, can I get a mover and seconder for the recommendation that's in front of you? Counselor Robb and Counselor DeVet. Any further discussion? All opposed? And that's carried, thank you very much. Okay, Cindy, 2020 approval for Middlesex Supports Program.
Thank you, through the warden. In front of Council today is the recommendation to approve the Middlesex Support Contracts. The Middlesex Support Contracts have been in place since 2009, and the programs are focused on reducing child poverty and assisting families. These programs are still relevant and important to our community today. They make a difference to the lives of children and families. The program has evolved since 2009, and some programs have changed or been added, such as the Early Outreach Conference that is hosted by Western University Student Council. These programs in total support over 900 children and families. They're almost close to 1,000. This year, the Early Literacy Group asked for a funding amount increase to 2,500. This is an increase of $716. I also have the package, so this is the package that they provide. So it's a baby book bag, and that's what's provided out to families and the children. And I just want to point out that this program works directly with Middlesex Children's Services Network, the county childcare services, early on, and our libraries. And another point I'll point out is this program supports over 200 children and really supports that early learning experience, which we know research says makes a huge difference to our children. As a result of COVID-19, some programs such as the Early Outreach Conference and Can I Play 2 may have to be delayed, or they may not even be able to operate at all. However, programs such as the Mutual Aid for Parenting Program and Consulting with Families are still being provided virtually, and they're also looking at opening up. I am recommending at this time that Council approve the programs. However, funding will not be provided if programs cannot happen in 2020. So just so you know, currently or in the past, we always get quarterly updates from our organizations. And if they don't spend all of the money, we do, we do receive those funds back. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks for that, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on that? Counselor Mayhew.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Cindy. Cindy, the, under this particular segment of the agenda in that report, the, in Strathroy, the Women's Rural Abuse Center, is that in here? In this particular one, in this funding application? I don't have a split screen to view these reports and, and look at you at the same time. But I remember reviewing the agenda prior to the meeting and the funding allotment to, looked extremely conservative to such an important entity. The, could you comment on that? And I, I hope I have the right, I'm drawing a connection between my concern and your report. I hope it's there, but that, there was a numerical amount of children involved in that. And I think it was the second highest needs program in that report. Yet the funding looked extremely conservative.
Thank you, through the warden to Counselor. Actually, that refers to the Early Literacy Program, so these baby book bags that I talked about. The funding actually goes to WRC, and they give it to the organization to hand the books out. So that's why it was at the $2,500 limit. If it was directly for a program to support WRC, you'd correct, it would be a lot larger.
All right, okay.
Any other questions for Cindy on that? Cindy, I just wondered with a couple of them. As we go through COVID and how this is going to change interactions, is their ability for, I'll just use like the Children's Aid Society for the swim passes. We don't know what sort of public swimming is going to look like or lessons is going to look like as the year rolls out. So is there flexibility for them if they see a need somewhere else that that money could be directed? Given, you know, how we're living right now?
Through the warden, that's a great question. I guess I kind of put that to Council. I would have no issues with that. And I guess if they came forward and suggested a different program or different support based on need, I could go back to County Council and we could ship that contract. I also do want to point out that in 2019, when I talk about those reconciliations, which happened in March, we did get a little bit money back from the Can I Play 2 program for the two communities. It's approximately around $5,000. I was going to come back at a future council meeting, and I'm currently working with Lindsay and Nadine around how we can use those, those dollars. So I will be coming back at a future council meeting just to talk about that. But we can also include any changes that, for example, Children's Aid Society may have regarding that program.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, so there is a recommendation in front of you. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Counselor Cornielsen and Counselor Warwick. Any further discussion? All opposed? And that's carried, thank you very much. Okay. From Chris, our County Engineer, FCM Asset Management Grant Funding Application. You're muted, Chris.
I'm just trying to hold my space bar in another window, that was my mistake. Thank you, Madam Warden. This is really a good news report. And first off, I'd just like to send some appreciation to the local public works directors. We've got a great group of staff and came together very quickly with these applications. This program under FCM is going to help municipalities collect data with regards to their primary assets, in this case, roads, in order to be in compliance with the asset management legislation. All municipalities need to have an asset management plan that identifies the condition of their existing assets, prime assets, excuse me, by July 1st of next year. And the county of Middlesex has been looking to work with the company to do a street scan. In this case, this is a company that works through LAS, which is an enterprise company or business enterprise company that operated under FCM that provides competitively priced services to municipalities across Canada. And in this case, there's a, a product called Street Logix, which is a software product and a street scan, which is what we're anticipating to do with the funding under this program. You can see from the spreadsheet, it's a fantastic funding program. As a joint application, we would be qualified for up to 90% of the project cost. In the county's case, it's capped at 50,000, but for each local municipality, it's a significant savings. You can see from my calculations, it takes the total cost of this project from about $371,000 across the whole county and all our municipalities, down around $99,000 for savings of over $272,000. So it's a great funding program that we can take advantage of here in Middlesex County. So as part of our funding request to fill the application, we need to have resolutions from each council. And you'll likely be seeing reports each of your local council meetings over the next couple of weeks. And the recommendation here, we have budgeted for it at the county, and we should be taking advantage of this funding in cooperation with the local municipalities. So staff is recommending that the resolution that you see in the recommendation be adopted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks for that, Chris. It certainly is exciting. This is a great opportunity. So any questions from anyone on Council, comments? Okay, I can't imagine that we wouldn't approve this recommendation. So if I can get a mover and seconder for that, Counselor Vanderhayden and Counselor Brennan. Any further discussion? And all opposed? And that's carried, that's great. When does that application have to go in, Chris? And when would we know if we're successful or not?
Yeah, through the warden, the applications are going to go in as soon as possible. One of the things we're working at jointly, and likely this Thursday morning on our regular meeting schedule, we're going to have a joint letter put together. And basically, we'll be putting in separate applications for each municipality, but likely be timed by the latest council resolution that's passed. So I haven't surveyed everyone, and we're not sure exactly when these are appearing on your local councils. But as soon as possible, that would be really advantageous for us. And according to, we're getting some great help from, from FCM. The sooner we get it in, the sooner that we'll hear back, so grant program. So it's a pool of funding. When we get an application and it's accepted, then we'll know for sure one way or another where we're, we could get the grant to be able to move forward.
Great, okay, thanks very much. All right, Counselors' comments. I think I'm going to start. I think I'm going to start. And then if anybody else has any comments, I'll entertain them. I just wanted to bring council up to date that last week, I guess it was last week, we attended a meeting of the City-County Liaison Committee. And our representatives on that meeting are Counselor Vanderha, or on that committee are Counselor Vanderhayden and Counselor Warwick and myself. And this is, Bill can speak to the history as well as Joanne can speak to the history of this committee. But it's funny, it hasn't met for about eight years. So, and not that we, you know, had eight years of business to discuss, but it was great to get together with our counterparts and our peers in the city. There was a number of staff support as well from the city and from the county that participated in the meeting. There certainly was a number of agenda items that we went through. And I think it's no secret that probably the hot button topics of the committee was land ambulance and social housing. And we are going to follow up with some correspondence with regards to some concerns that we have with social housing. And then we've also got a follow-up meeting that we are trying to manage with land ambulance. Bill, did you want to chime in at all on that?
I'll chime in. The couple other things that Kathy didn't mention, we're targeting June 17th at noon for our next meeting. That may be a surprise to some of the members of committee. We just, Kathy and I just talked about that yesterday. So let me know how that looks at your end. We are going to send a letter out today. I think if I can get the Warden's approval of it, I just have to put a few finishing touches on it, proposing that social housing also be on the agenda. Kathy put it best yesterday when she said we should really just ask one question around social housing. And before she said this, she said, you know, social housing was a greater increase in our budget cost and land ambulance was by a long shot. And the real question we need to answer it as a council is, where is the social and housing investment being made in Middlesex? And I can't think of a better way to put it, actually. So that's what I'm going to ask the city staff to do and put in the, put it, make a presentation that talks about that. I mentioned June 17th. We're answering questions for the city that were contained in a letter that I'm not really sure you saw. It came as a resolution, and I'm not sure exactly when we received it. The resolution was passed on March 3rd. I know we didn't receive it on March 3rd because it was put in the mail and sent to us. It probably came right around the start of COVID time. But they did put some questions to us, and the questions are interesting. They've requested specific cost driver information for the past five years, included but not limited to unit hour utilization, call volume, code zero, hospital offload delays and service improvements during that time. So some of those we've answered over the past two to three years. Now they're asking for the past five years. Some of those are really getting down into what I would call management administration. I asked, whenever I had two hours in front of their council, I asked the question, is there a general belief that the paramedic services is being run inefficiently? Because the way these questions are being asked, it would lend you to believe that that's what you think. And the answer I got back, no one argued that it was a very efficient service. In fact, I think that's what one counselor who's been asking a lot of questions said. So I'm not sure where these questions are coming from, but we do have to give some careful contemplation to them because they're advancing beyond governance questions. There are even questions that, you know, are deep down into operations and management administration. So we're going to give all these answers, but it's a fine line now that we've crossed over into into management administration. So we're just being careful about making sure we don't set wrong expectations around who's responsible for the service. So that's what's going to happen on June 17th. And like I said, hopefully we'll have better answers. I don't know what else you wanted me to add, Warden, but that's what I got.
Yep, that's good. Any comments, questions from Counselors? Counselor Vanderhayden.
Thank you on that one. Bill, is there any way we could stretch that meeting to 12:30 instead of noon? I have a meeting that ends at noon. And I know how that, when you're right on the same timeline and you're working on one computer, although I tried it on two the other day where I was closing one off. And you have to, because the one uses a mouse and the other one was a touchscreen. And I was doing it the opposite, and I was trying to figure out how come it wasn't working. So, you know, that was kind of convocative in my living room. But if you could stretch that to 12:30 or even quarter after, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I will take that under advisement. I know there's some time pressures at their end. And I, so we're trying to jam this meeting in sideways, but I'll do my best. We, it's important for both the Warden and I, and I think other members of the committee, to get these answers back as fast as possible and also get some social housing answers that we're looking for. So we're trying our best and we'll do our best with that.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, any other counsel comments at this time? Counselor Mayhew.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To Bill, Bill, there's a characteristic of the hamlets and villages throughout all of Middlesex that the city doesn't have in terms of a target market for social housing. And there's a new word, they're even using it in the real estate circles called walkability. That they're finding that the villages and examples like Strathroy, Glencoe, Park Hill, they are, there's places you can walk to get your groceries. You can walk, go and see a hockey game. You can walk to the post office. You can walk to Tim Horton's. And as I see the development of London, very often, there's areas of the city where these homes are being, where these people are living that make it extremely difficult. Where there are some great attributes of Middlesex County in terms of this word, walkability. And it's become an adjective that the real estate community are using to actually sell homes as a benefit. And we certainly don't see them out in our part of Middlesex County. And we, we have locations in areas where these people would have the amenities of life within a walkable distance. That as cities develop, they seem to lose that. Thank you, Madam Warden.
We could add that comment to the topics, like into the social housing discussion and ask that question as well. I know the first time I heard the term walkability was actually at a Middlesex Municipal Day in Elderton, when Al Edmondson was organizing that Middlesex Municipal Day. And we had a planning specialist from Western come in and talk about the importance of walkability to future communities. That must have been 12 to 15 years ago. And you're right, we need to make better progress on that for sure, and especially in the social housing world.
Okay. Are there any last call for Counselor comments? Oh, Counselor Vanderhayden.
We kind of touched on this earlier, but I just want to say thank you to Lindsay and her staff for getting all that and Morgan to getting us all the information and all the computer and the books for us to read. And I wonder if you got any feedback on that, Lindsay? Because it was a lot of fun to do, and I hope it worked out okay. But I think it was a great initiative, and I want to thank you for putting it together.
Yes, through the Warden to Counselor Vanderhayden. We've got back a number of the videos, so we're just working on adding some titles and kind of fancying them up a little bit. So then we'll be in touch with everyone so that we can work out the timing and you can promote them as well through your own channels so we can get some good viewership. But they look great, so thanks very much.
Great, we'll all look forward to that, Lindsay.
Warden, can I just answer a previous question?
Yes, certainly, go ahead.
Or actually, I probably won't answer it. Neil, can you just answer the, we have the details on the question around fire and paramedic services together.
Okay.
Through you, thank you, Bill, through you, Madam Warden, to county council and Counselor Mayhew. So the percentage of fire corresponding within North Middlesex is 2.8% of the time. In all of Middlesex County itself, it is 9% of the time. And that probably is due to the larger areas where there may be more calls. And that's why we're seeing that.
Is that, does that help Counselor Mayhew?
Yes, thank you very much, Neil. That numbers seem surprisingly low, but thank you.
Sorry, Madam Warden, if you don't mind. The only other comment is with the various fire departments as well, Counselor Mayhew, there are different tiering responses that they wish to go on. So it also depends on, again, number of calls and what the fire department is prepared to go on. So some are more, I guess, wider in scope and some are more narrowed in scope as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Okay, moving on, we have a number of bylaws. Kathy, are you ready?
I'm ready. The first bylaws, A to G, are all Middlesex support. So I'm not going to read them all, I'm just going to read who it's with. So the first one is the Middlesex supports with Marymount Family Support and Crisis Care. The second one is with Family Service Thames Valley. The next one is with Southwest Middlesex. The next one's with Strathroy Caradoc. The next one's with the Women's Rural Resource Center. The next one's with the Children's Aid Society. And the last one there is with the Western University Students Council. And then we have a bylaw to authorize the execution of a service delivery review for payroll services review service agreement between the corporation and the county of Middlesex and Optimus SBR with respect to the municipal modernization program. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Can I get a mover and seconder for the first and second reading? Counselor DeVet and Counselor Smith. All opposed? And that's carried. And for the third and final reading? Counselor Richards and Counselor Mayhew. All opposed? And that's carried. And just a reminder that we will do the confirming bylaw at the end of the meeting. Okay, moving into the committee of the whole. Reports of county counselors. Morgan, a strategic plan update.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to the rest of council, I just wanted to provide a quick update regarding our strategic planning efforts. We were hoping to provide council with an overview of the survey findings today. However, we will just quickly provide council with an update in regard to where we are at with the survey responses. I propose a new timeline and just mention a couple of things about the department profiles. So in terms of the survey responses, we recognize that everyone is extremely busy, given all things COVID-19 related. So I'm saying that we might not have provided enough time initially for everyone to respond to the survey. So we're going to leave the survey open until June 1st. And we'll actively work to promote the survey so we can encourage some additional responses. So you'll likely see a few emails from me through this, throughout this week, just trying to encourage some additional responses. In terms of our updated timeline, so we're looking to provide council with those initial findings regarding the survey results at the June 9th county council meeting. During, during the week of June 15th, we're looking to host those two breakout sessions. So I know that council saw an email from me originally talking about June 2nd and June 4th. We had some conflicts that would cause us to pause there. So what I'm going to do is send out a doodle poll to council and senior staff for that week of June 15th, just to get a better idea of what dates work well. And then in terms of the department profiles, so I'll be sending those out probably tomorrow or I guess Thursday. There's just some stuff that I want to confirm with department heads before it becomes a public document. But really, what those public profiles are meant to do is provide specific departmental information, generally who they are, what they do, why they do it. It's going to speak to some opportunities and challenges that departments are facing. And then, of course, we'll provide you an organizational chart at a high level. And then some information related to external and legislative influences that departments are faced with. And then, of course, any other important information that department heads feel council should know relating to strategic planning. So just in mine and Cindy's initial review of those department profiles, COVID-19 is, of course, a big bias affecting our strategic planning efforts. It's disrupted quite a few of our business models. The library is a perfect example of what that disruption looks like. It's moving from a, generally a physical service delivery model to a hybrid virtual and physical. So COVID is also providing quite a bit of uncertainty in 2020 and 2021. And then it, I just did a quick word search of the word COVID in our department profiles, and it appears more than 10 times. So it's just something that we have to be conscious about during our strategic planning. And then, of course, another common theme seems to be the provincial changes generally related to modernization and reviews of specific service areas. So municipal modernization generally and health units are both good examples of this. And then, of course, some of the special projects that Middlesex County is currently undertaking might not be well represented in department profiles because they don't exactly fit in a specific area. So Cindy and I are going to review what could be missing. And then we're going to provide that information to council before that June 9th review. So that's it for a quick update. I'm happy to take any questions or comments of council. I'm not sure, Bill, if there's anything else or Cindy that I might have missed, but that's it.
Okay, any comments, questions on that and the new timeline for Morgan? Counselor Brennan.
Yeah, just to Morgan, I'd just like to thank for the extension. I know my timeline's been a little busy and I didn't get to it yet, but thanks for the extended timeline. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, any other comments, questions? Not wanting to, you know, skew the breakouts or the information that we'll digest during our strat plan process. I just, I personally, you know, we use the words disruption and uncertainty, and it's a bias. But I honestly think that this COVID-19 really gives us a great opportunity to really kind of catapult us into what we can be. So, you know, that's how I would look at it, but that's just me. Counselor Vanderhayden.
I have to agree with you, Warden, because if we would have done this survey three months ago, we would have had totally different answers than what we have now because we're all thinking in a totally different realm, even if I can even use that word. So it behooves us to keep going with this. And thank you, Morgan, for taking the helm of that. And thank you for extending the deadline because I also had it on my calendar and it just totally left me. So I apologize for that. I usually fill out every survey that we put forward and I just, it totally got past me. And I've now written it down in big letters in front of me. So thank you for that. And it'd be interesting to see what we're all thinking now as we move ahead in this new post, or we're still in the era, but post and how we move forward as communities. So thanks for that.
Great, thank you for that. Counselor DeVet.
Thank you, through you to Morgan. Morgan, is there any way of saving it? The content that you put in, I was quite a ways through it, and I thought I would come back to it. And like John, I had a busy week. And yeah, so, I mean, I didn't get a rep, like, and I wasn't done. So I appreciate the extension as well. But I'm just wondering, is there something that would allow one to fit it in when there's a bigger chunk of time? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor DeVet. I'll have to look into that question. I'm not sure, to be honest, if there is the ability to save your response. So I'll look into that one and I'll include that. your response. So I'll look into that one and I'll include that in my email, just to let folks know that, that it is or isn't possible.
And you know what? It's not a big deal, because all you have to do actually is write your points on paper and make sure you've got like a bigger chunk of time as opposed to going, oh, what's the next question? And let me get to that one. So, yeah. Now that I know, I can probably do better. Thank you.
Well, even thinking through it, I could just do like a quick template of those questions. And then maybe we can just transpose them from like a Word document to the survey. That way you'll have a little bit more, more opportunity to kind of type some stuff out.
Okay, any other questions on that? Comments? Okay, seeing then, there's no action items, and so we'll move on to correspondence and information items. Strathmere Lodge Occupancy and Activity Report for April 20th, or April 2020, excuse me, Report from Brent Kerwin. Counselor Vanderhayden?
Through the word, through the word to Brent, I see our numbers are doing fine. I was hearing from someone else that they were, they were not making anybody, not taking any intakes at their homes. Well, we obviously are, because this was, there was, I don't have the number in front of me, but there were people that came and people that left. So, okay, so there was four move-ins in, in May. So we are intaking.
Maybe you're referring to the hospital. Brent, is that the policy that was, that's probably what you're referring to?
Yes, through the warden to Counselor Vanderhayden. The numbers look, in terms of occupancy, good for April. They're going to look lower in May because we have had residents depart, not because of COVID reasons. And as it stands now, there is a moratorium on hospital admissions, as Bill is alluding to. And so we have-
I think that's, that's where you're getting it. Yeah. That's in the news a lot about us not being able to admit from the hospital, and it is a cause for concern in social media in some spots as well. So you'll hear a lot about that.
Okay.
If I could add, although I'm mentioning that the occupancy is, is going to be lower, we have been assured by the ministry that we won't be impacted negatively in terms of funding for that.
Good to know. Thanks, Brent. News release from United Way Algen Middlesex entitled, "United Way Invests in COVID-19 Relief for Seniors: Federal Funding Flows to Local Agencies Today." Information on the United Way Algen Middlesex Emergency Community Support Fund to help charities serve and support vulnerable Canadians during the COVID-19 pandemic. Article from the London Free Press entitled, "Free Wi-Fi Offered to the Thames Valley Students with Spotty Wireless Service." Information on the Virtual AMO 2020 Conference. Copy of an email from Mark Studeney with respect to Elderton Road Safety Rumble Strips. Counselor Vanderhayden?
Thank you. When I read this, I, I had some mixed feelings about it, because here we are trying to make the road safer for, for vehicles, which, which the road is made for. And yet we have bikers on there and walkers on there, obviously, because we live in rural areas. But at what point is a person supposed to take responsibility for their own actions? Like, if I'm biking in the middle of the road and, and now people want to, us to do more, I, I just find that very conflicting. So I don't know if Chris wants to talk to this or-
Thanks, Counselor Vanderhayden. Chris?
Yeah, through the warden to Counselor Vanderhayden, you know, I do agree. The one thing I would make clear is that the county is not exposed to additional liability with this. These are rumble strips. We've done these hundreds of times before. There's not a liability issue here with us installing rumble strips. They're installed in accordance with accepted guidelines and standards. And actually, they're installed at a depth that is meant to be acceptable for cyclists. So while I understand cyclists don't like to slow down and have to get off their bikes to get around the rumble strips, they're an important safety feature. And as such, they really would trump, in my opinion, the comfort of a cyclist who would just need to get off their bikes and get around a couple of sets of rumble strips over less than 100 meters. And these are cyclists that are traveling a long distance. I think I said before the meeting began that we're all, there's some anecdotal stories about drivers driving around rumble strips. I would highly urge drivers to stay in their lane. Rumble strips are there for a reason. They're there to make you aware of an oncoming stop sign. And they are there to eliminate the types of serious collisions we see by people who are inadvertently not seeing the stop sign ahead, the stop condition ahead. So for those reasons, again, I agree with Counselor Vanderhayden. Unfortunately, cyclists will experience some discomfort around rumble strips. This is not the only location. There are many others across the county. And safety is one of our highest priorities. And unfortunately, it trumps the comfort of a cyclist riding through this intersection.
Okay, copy of a letter from the President of the Middlesex Federation of Agriculture, asking the county to ease the burden on agriculture and reduce the farm tax ratio in Middlesex County. Counselor Brennan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just, I was wanting, you know, I know we've talked for the last couple of years about having this discussion at the county, at the council level, and we haven't got around to that yet, but at some point in time this year, I would like to see us at least have the discussion at council and get everybody's input on it and see if there is any anything we want to do or we want to leave it status quo, but I think we should at least, at least take the time to have the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Want to say something? Yeah?
Yeah, just if, in preparation for that, then if there's background information that somebody wants in advance of that discussion, just let us know. We've got, I think, a long a litany, Cindy's nodding her head, because we have a litany of information that will choke a horse of information on tax ratios and impact studies and everything else. And so when you are ready to have that discussion, we can try to distill that down into something manageable for you, but if there are specific questions you want answered before that, please let us know. So it makes the discussion more valuable when it does come, but just text us or email us.
Thank you for that. Copy of the minutes of the Economic Resiliency Task Force meeting held on April 29th, 2020. Copy of Phase, of the Phase Two: Impacts of COVID-19 on Businesses in Middlesex County. Copy of the working document entitled, "Middlesex County Plan for COVID-19 Economic Resiliency." Counselor Vanderhayden?
Well, thank you. I read this with interest, because this is something that's going to affect all of our communities as we move forward down the road. So thank you to the committee for, for putting this together and it'd be interesting to see what, what occurs as, as we move forward. And I, and I hope that you continue to meet, to continue to address and task back what, what's occurring. And I see Kara's on the call as well. So, so, so that we don't lose track of what's going on. And this is, this is something that we continue as a live document, because I think it's really important for all of our communities to do that and, and to do it in length step.
Thank you for that comment, Counselor Vanderhayden. I'll let Kara speak to that, but I just, we do have a meeting tomorrow. I mean, right now, we're meeting every two weeks. I think we all want to keep as engaged as possible, but who knows how that will, will play out as the year goes on. And I just, I want to take the opportunity to thank Kara, because she was really the one through our conversations and the committee working, or a meeting, excuse me. She was the one that put, put together the, the working document. And I think we all agree, as members of the committee or as the task force, that, I mean, we're all open to it changing as it needs be, as, and as time dictates. And there could be things that we see today as being priorities that fall off, or things that we're not even considering today that come up. So it actually, it, it really is a working document in the true sense, and we certainly will keep you updated. Kara, did you want to add anything to that?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Vanderhayden. Thank you for those words. Thank you for taking time as council to review that document. It will, of course, be an ongoing and working document that will influence many things, including, I suspect, our county strategic plan, as well as our economic development strategic plan, as well as those of your local municipalities. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank the warden for her leadership along with myself and all of those who are serving as councillors and other sectoral members on the task force for their attention. We have had exemplary attendance at these meetings. They do take some time and some consideration. And the document has been accepted, but as that, in terms of working. So we'll continue to add to it and add projects to it, and we encourage all members of council to get engaged and to advise us if you have suggestions that we can take to the group for consideration. So thank you.
Thanks, Kara. Okay, can I get a mover and seconder to receive these items for information, please? Counselor Roth? And Counselor Elliott? All opposed? And that's Carrie, thank you very much. Inquiries? Okay, new business. Our next council meeting is Tuesday, June 9th. And by all accounts, we'll be meeting again on this platform. We will just take a short five-minute recess so that Kathy can finalize the minutes for approval. Don't go anywhere. Great. If everyone's had a chance to look at those. Counselor Vanderhayden?
I may have missed it at the beginning, but you, you did mention also that we had the city-county liaison meeting, and I didn't see anything reported on there on that.
Oh, just in, in the councillor's comments?
Yeah, I didn't see that. And I think it's important for us to put that in there, because otherwise, seven years from now, we can look back and say, yeah, we did it. Just teasing.
Sometimes it's seven weeks.
Pardon me?
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's seven weeks, we forget that.
Just, I think that should be added in there somewhere.
Okay. Okay, Kathy can add that in. And was there anything else that we saw that needed to be adjusted or amended? Kathy, did you just want to say how you're going to reflect that note just?
I'll just, I'll go to my notes and add it to the number nine.
Okay. All right. So if we're good with that, if I can get a mover and a seconder to approve the council minutes, and I guess it would be as amended this time, because, yeah. And a mover and setter, Counselor Richards? And Counselor Warwick? All opposed? And that's carried. And then deferred from earlier in the meeting, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the Corporation of the County of Middlesex, May 26, 2020, first and second reading. A mover and seconder for that, please. Counselor Mayhew and Counselor DeVet? All opposed? And that's carried. And mover and seconder for the third and final reading. Counselor Smith and Counselor Brennan? All opposed? And that's carried. Moving on to our announcements, no new announcements, that's the same one that's been on for a bit. And a motion to adjourn at two, nine minutes after two, Counselor Vanderhayden and Counselor Warwick? All opposed? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Go out and enjoy this beautiful day, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.